Hey, you're ready to hear.
Okay. We'll bring the Bellevue City Bellevue Finding and Zoning Commission meeting order Monday, March seventeenth by thirty P M. Over you, Brian for roll call.
All right, uh, here's your.
Here.
Mr. You just.
Yeah.
Mr. Gugel, present.
Please.
Thanks, Mr. Uh, number is asked.
Hmm, great. Uh, notice from gender compliance. Uh, finding that the regular meeting and notice, regular meeting notice and agenda were posted in accordance with Idaho Code seventy-four two oh four. Within forty-eight hours prior to the meeting at City of Bellevue, uh, City Hall Post Office on the city's website on March twelfth, twenty twenty-five. Uh, motion which was actually announced.
I move the notice for the March seventeenth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting was completed in accordance with Idaho Code section seventy-four dash two oh four.
Second.
Okay.
Hi.
Guys. Call for conflict, whatever any conflict of tonight's agenda.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, public comment, any public comment for items that are not on the agenda tonight? Oh, don't see anything. Uh, consent to agenda action item approval of minutes of the March third, twenty twenty-five meeting. March third, the one thing. That I had on that, um, Brian was that, uh. Unless I'm reading this, oh. So under five, under public hearing. He said that I opened the public comment, so that must have been from the February eighteenth meeting.
Uh.
Minutes, it's like half mid middle of the page there on page four.
Oh, yeah, I, I just didn't, I reused February eighteen minutes.
Okay, well, I was assuming that was the case of that, uh. So I just wanted to mention.
That's notice, notice.
Okay.
Do you have a question about minutes? Is the, um, video recording also posted on the site after?
It's on YouTube.
Okay, perfect.
Oh, very exciting.
YouTube.
Thrilling.
Um. Yeah, if there's any. Uh, would entertain a motion for that. Or can we, can we do both A and E together? Okay. Um, so also, I guess we'll put the findings of fact, that conclusions of law and decision documents from the previous meetings. Um, from the. Judy Keith Myers, findings that. Okay, yeah, entertain.
Okay.
Uh, I move to approve, uh, the final minutes for the March third, twenty twenty-five meeting and the findings of fact, conclusions of law. Uh, from that same meeting, uh, both items on the consent agenda.
Second.
Yeah.
Hi.
Right. Yes. Okay, uh, new business action item. Well. Change an exterior finish for a baby authentic green restaurant. One, one, twenty-six. Um, Brian know.
All right, yes, thank you. The design chapter of Bellevue City Code requires designer approval of the commission for any exterior changes to a building. Uh, this is about as minor as it goes, that's, uh. Changing the existing green paint to a classic burgundy red. Uh, they already have a certain permit approval, uh, for the oning sign, uh, that'll go above the. Of a similar color, uh, little size, um. Yeah, that'll say every question.
That's the old hot dog sandwich.
Yeah.
Yeah. Hmm.
I got delicious.
Oh, yes. Those delicious.
Yes, sorry.
All right.
I move to approve. Uh, where did it go? Uh, I move. To approve D R. No, goodness, what am I doing?
I'm on the page.
Go for it.
Okay.
Bail me out.
I, I move that we approve D R dash twenty-five dash zero one. And to direct staff to prepare findings of fact, conclusions of law and decision. Documents reflecting this recommendation based on the record provided.
Sir.
Go on, please.
Right.
You know, much best is. Yeah, easy. Um, okay, number six, public theater action item for appeal of S T twenty-four dash fourteen signing permit for Maverick. It's at eight fifty-one North Main Street. So, Ryan, let you.
All right.
Introduce this.
Thank you, uh, the. Uh, applicant Maverick, uh, has applied for sign permit, uh, the. Based on my analysis, uh, they have two hundred and four square feet of building signage. Uh, the maximum allowed, uh, is based on the street frontage of a property, um. With a maximum of a hundred and fifteen square feet, uh, is two square feet or linear foot, and they have more than that's seventy-five, four hundred, max seven hundred and fifty. Um, the main item in question is the determination of both sides, that would be monument sign. Uh, count as sign area, uh, the definition of sign area in Bellevue City Code. Uh, is specifically states that it is per side, the, I'll let read the definition here, just so you have it. The area of the face of the sign per side, which forms the integral part of the display, including letters and art, but excluding necessary supports, background or uprights on which the signage may be placed. Uh, so clearly says per side of sign. Uh. And then additionally, if you look at the site plan on page forty-seven of your meeting package. They specifically have. Both sides of the monument sign in their application materials. Uh. So. My request would be to uphold the administrative decision that they have exceeded the sign area and are conditioned to. Reduce the sign area of. To below one hundred and fifty square feet of total sign area and below seventy-five square feet of illuminated sign area. That'll stand for any questions?
So with that, uh, the, the two signs that are going to be out front, which I'm assuming is sign one, i- is that like? The combination of hell is that the two hundred and five?
So the combination of the sign, um, yeah, we'll, we'll turn the staff report. Forty-two, yeah, break down to. There are both sides of the monument sign, uh, there is a wall sign facing Main Street or the wall sign. Uh, facing south. Uh, there are signs, there's signage above the fueling canopies, uh, there are graphics on the fuel pumps. And our instructions on the RV disposal.
Okay, so all of those.
All of those combined.
Combined come, need to come be below a hundred.
Correct.
Okay, okay, so they could make adjustments to any of those to come into components.
Yes.
Yeah, or decide not to put up sign, one of them.
Yes, they do.
Cause we don't. We're not requiring them to put up. Any of those. Yeah. Come on.
Looks like there's a no parking sign proposed as well. Did that fall under some sort of excluded signage type?
I don't remember in specific language, but there is exclusions, if it is less than two square feet in total area, the directional ledge, parking signs are.
Um. Yeah, those are all questions I had, guys.
I think that's pretty cut and dry. I did have a couple questions, though. Uh, page forty. Says down, uh, section A, paragraph one, if the business is located at the intersection of two streets, a second sign may be located on the non-addressed side. So that brings into question for me. Sign three, that would be on the south side of the building. Since this is not a building on two street intersections, that that sign would be permissible.
Yeah, I. I recall looking at this at some point, uh, but it must have slipped through my. Uh, fingers, so I think that is a, as an opportunity to eliminate, uh. Fourteen point four square feet of. Third.
Or is that wall sign two?
Yes.
Okay.
So sign three would not be permissible based off of that.
Sorry.
Okay.
Oh, and then where would the fuel canopy signs fall under that same, um, not the same. Paragraph there, but section B, number of signs.
So one three standing. Building complex, so if you think like, uh, Bellevue Square.
Mm-hmm.
That business condos. Or, um, I forget the name of it, the one that's got the silver dragon and the.
Oh, yeah.
She played, like, they got a single sign out front. That is what this section B is referring to.
Okay. And so the fuel canopy signs would also be, they would be allowed?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions, Eric? Um. Fully opened it up for.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, oh, this is the opportunity.
Uh, I don't get this thing.
Okay. Um. Is it, is it, um, what's?
Who, who, who is Clint?
Clint. Um. Clint, would you like to say anything?
Uh, yeah, good evening. Thanks for, thanks for, um, going over this again, having given this opportunity to appeal this, um. The only things that we found through our analysis and study of the other C stores. In the area was that there. We didn't have exact numbers, you might have better records than we were able to, to figure out through our, our sign vendor doing this, but, um. It looks, from what we've gathered, that our competitors, the, the Chevrons in town, Philip sixty-six in town, are allotted more square footage than what we've been. Given, and I don't know if that's due to a code change. But wha- what we've found is that they're been given, um, what, well above the hundred and fifty total square footage there. Even just clearly looking at their, their freestanding pole signs or their area is much larger. Um, we're showing about fifty square feet per side on our, on our sign. And from what we've gathered, um, the competitors have about seventy-five square feet per side, which would. Max them out, and, and that's not including what they put on the canopy and or on the building. Um, we. I guess just want to have a, a competitive, have it, have it be a competitive market as well. That's all I've got to add on that. Happy to ha- answer any questions on my side.
Okay, thanks. Um. I guess at this point, we'll go ahead and open it up for public comment, because we did receive a few comments that we saw on. There, you know, but then also if somebody from. Here would like to make public comment, um, please state your name, uh, and address for the record and raise your hand and we'll. Go for it. Just.
Yeah. Yeah, thanks, thanks, everyone for here. I'll stand. My name is Chris Alexander. I live at five oh one North Fourth Street here in Bellevue. Um, I would say the con- it's been helpful to hear what's being proposed in terms of the signage. I think the only comments I'd have are, are more general, um. I think when I reflect on Bellevue and Haley, a lot of the community, a lot of value is built on. The vistas, the mountains, what you can see, and so I, when I reflect on the signage across many of the businesses, usually they're subdued, not distract. From the views across the valley, um. I think it will be pretty apparent, man, what Maverick is, what it offers, what its offerings are, the fact that it's the only southbound. Gas station that others can take advantage of, and so when I just reflecting principle on the signage, um. I reflect on what I see, uh, for example, the Seringo School or the other businesses where they're laid up against the storefront. And it's very common for not that there to not be prominent independent posts and signs and that sort of thing. And then with regards to maybe. The gentleman's concern about competitors, I think we as a city have talked about how we can improve our governance, and so. Um, regardless of what competitors might look like at the moment, I think if we have ordinances and principles that have us adhere to a hundred and fifty square feet or seventy-five, whatever it may be. I think adhering to that is good governance, uh. Even if maybe that hasn't been reflected in the past, and so I, those are just my thoughts in terms of the principles I'd like to see as a, as a community member as we discuss the signage, so thank you for your time.
Okay. Anyone else? Anybody, if you're online, you can raise your hand.
There's something.
No.
Okay, yeah. All right, okay, I guess this time all close public comment. Um. My, I do have a question, um, Brian, with, because this is the first time a, a sign has come in front of, um, P and Z since I've been, um, on here. Do you know when the or was, has the ordinance been in place for? A period of time, was it dated?
I, you know, I think it was fairly recent, but I don't know for certain, um, and, but generally signage is an administrative approval.
Yeah.
Unless there's disagreement with you guys.
Rarely comes, yeah, say, I shouldn't say rarely never, except for this case, um. Yeah, so. Um. Uh. Here's how you guys feel about this.
Um, yeah, I am not inclined to grant this appeal, um, to address the applicant. It is unfortunate that existing non-conformities do, are around town, um, but I do think that if those stations were to ever. Apply for signage again, they would be held to the same standard that code has set right now, so. Um. I think that our community, you know, does strive to keep things kind of. Low-key, um, and certainly signage ordinances are designed to. Sort of counteract what I would call sort of corporate overbranding, um, so that's where I stand on this.
I agree with you. I don't feel like we should make any concessions on it. I'm not willing to.
I feel like the language could be a little clearer in. In the code, um, I can see how a person could read that as, uh. As, you know, if it's a hundred and, it, it would be, yeah, I can see how a person could, could read that and think, oh, a hundred and fifty square feet per side. Um, would be three hundred total, um. I, I don't think that's what is, is intended here, um, and I don't, I think, uh, a. You know, a, a careful reading of it. Said, you know, does explain that, but, um, at just a, at just a glance, it would be easy to. To think that, oh, if I've got a two-sided sign, then I get that amount on each side.
For sure.
Um, so I think that's a, that's an opportunity where we could potentially clean up our language a little bit, um, but I agree with. The consensus that. Uh, everyone else is doing it, is not a, doesn't get you a yes in my house with my kids, and I don't think it should get a yes from us. Um, and when, when the other gas stations go to update their signage, they'll be, you know, required to come into compliance and. So, as far as I'm concerned, it is a level playing field, and I'm not inclined to, to grant the appeal.
Hmm. I would cur- I'm curious about when, when things, let's see, the. Country store down in South End Town, you know, that sign partially blew out or however goddamaged or whatever, I'm not sure if that's in compliance or not, but was, at what point? If, if they just replacing what exists. They're allowed to do that, or, or when does it come? Come into, okay, you've, you've exceeded your size and now you need to, do you know, Brian, of?
Not off the top of my head, there is a checker on what happens if non-conformities are damaged.
You can replace a non-conforming use, which can expand, but. Can't approve all that, right? Use can make a better.
Yeah, so that's in kind or same. Okay. Um. Yeah, no, I would, I would concur. I mean, it is kind of unfortunate how things. Uh. Uh. Forming uses in the past, but that doesn't give us authorization.
Misordinances from two thousand and eighteen. That happened after the Maverick stores, not Maverick, but the country store.
Yeah. Hmm, yeah. I'm good. Yeah. Um, all right, well, I would, uh. Unless there's further discussion. Obviously. You know, ten.
I move to deny the appeal of S T twenty-four fourteen. Do I need to have him from this thing?
Second.
Yeah, on favor.
Hi.
Else's. Hmm. Um. Next meeting is April seventh. Um, does anybody know that for an advance of air? Um, not going to be available.
Uh, we're, sorry, Sarah.
Yeah, I'm available.
Yeah, I think I should be good to go.
Hmm. Okay, I should be as well. Yeah. Well. Yeah, with that, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Uh, before we do, I would like to. Offer a suggestion that it seems to me that there. Might be a, um, an opportunity to, um, to do some public outreach on like. Um. It, yeah. Kind of how city government works, um, you know, the nature of a number of the.
Hmm.
Comments and, you know, comments in the paper, comments submitted is like. You know, people talking about, well, I don't know, you know, why you think we need another gas station, it's like, a, a gas station is a permitted use, our. You know, our, our job, our, you know, what, what we're. Found by law to do is to look at, um, you know, does this meet the standard? If yes, it's not our job to decide if, if a gas station is needed in Bellevue. And I think that's something that a lot of people misunderstand about kind of what we do, and, um. You know, I don't know. Tony, I don't know if this is something that would be, um. Something you'd be interested in doing, I don't know, a series, I don't know if it's something that gets worked into, um. You know, the articles that, that get written about, you know, about what happens at the meetings, um, I don't know if it's something that we reach out to the school district. Um, I just think there's a, there's a lot of misunderstanding out there as far as how, how city government operates, and I think there's a, there's an opportunity, you know, between. Kind of some of the contentious stuff that has been happening in Bellevue and also in Tetchum, I just think there's a, there's a. A neat opportunity to, to reach out and, and help people understand the process. Or how it should go, um, how it does go. I think there's a lot of room there to, to play with it. Thank you.
Well, if I may, um, John, I'd be happy to respond. Um, yeah, hold on just one sec, I want to get Brian's.
Um, yeah, so there's a couple of opportunities, one, we have a, uh, bi-weekly newsletter, if you all haven't subscribed. Subscribe to that, and we're always looking for. Educational content to include in that, uh, if you guys would be interested in volunteering, writing up a little, uh, how planning and zoning works, uh, or I'm always looking for. Stuff to include in there, um, and then we're most likely embarking on a cop land. Project here in the next few months, uh, kind of getting that rolling, and there's going to be a lot of education and, uh. That sort of stuff that will be going into that process and outreach as well.
Yeah. Well, my experience with things like that is, um. You know, s- s- some people know, or even through the complaint, they'll, or they, they'll may. Uh, get reminded, uh, but then it's quickly forgotten.
Yeah.
As well, but I, I like, cause it is. You know, there's, I have discussions frequently with people that go, yeah, we don't need another this or that, and it's like, it's not our choice. And we just have to remind them, and of course, and, you know, they, they, you know, they want things like that, but it's. But it is that education balance that has to, not balance, but. That has to happen and, and write something like that up, I think would be great. And then it would be, something could be there, like a frequent ask questions page, something like that, so we can remind people of. You know, our latitude and what our sideboards are with city government and city planning and so that, um. So, no, no, weren't, nobody's being the bad guy, we're just saying this is how city government works, I would support that as well, um. You know, I, I don't want to, you know, open this up as a dialogue right now, because this is really not on the agenda, but, uh, I will, um. Tony, or, Tony, if you did want to, uh, say something, we'll, we'll let you do that, and then we can kind of, um. Hmm, yeah, um. I'll keep it pretty simple. My role as a news journalist really is simply to be a proxy.
As a news journalist really is simply to be a proxy witness to what transpires in City Hall. Um, I would never be in a position to include in an article whether or not the city of Bellevue. Needs gas stations or doesn't need gas stations and I'm quite sure I have not gone that far in my reporting. Um, in this particular instance, I'll just say that I think I was. Fairly clear in my mind and in my reporting. Um, as this permitted use moved forward on Main Street. And, um, did, um. Deliberate somewhat with my editor about how to report on some of the. Uh, misunderstandings of the city processes by certain people. Uh, residents in town who this this permitting seemed to have snuck up on them. And, um, these were people I never really saw at city council meetings, uh, or P and Z meetings, but. I think there was, uh, a little misunderstanding on their part as far as, uh, the processes. Um, in terms of. Providing any help, uh, with regard to what you guys, you know, your jobs are with. Regarding to, I guess, public relations, that's really not my job, but I will say that when you have. Uh, for instance, the the very good tutorials that Brian Parker puts forward in a, an open forum. I tend to report on those. I report on comprehensive plan reviews and meetings. Um, but it isn't really my role to go and try to change people's minds with regard to how they. Interpret my, uh, news stories. I hope that after all these years, my work speaks for itself, and I I hope you all know that. I'm perfectly willing to correct the story if there's, um. Factual error, um, and also please understand with space constraints, we're never. Like, I never really had the opportunity to tell the entire story with every particle that I write. We're pretty targeted to the decisions that are made. I try to capture the discussions at City Hall. In a responsible manner and, um, get ready for the next article, so I hope that's helpful.
Sure, and for the record, I wasn't, uh, saying that your articles were. Were misunderstanding or were characterizing things that way. Um, I've seen comments, uh, like on the website in response to some of your articles where. You know, it's pretty clear that so that people don't understand how city government actually works. Um, and that wasn't something I was putting on you, so if that is how that came across, I apologize.
Well, no, no, not at all. I didn't, I didn't feel like you were targeting me in that way, so I appreciate your pointing that out, Eric. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Now that means if I could just say one thing, maybe.